Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Norco City Council to order, please. And we did not have a closed session. So we will start off with Mayor Pro Tem Kevin Bass with the pledge of allegiance, followed by Councilmember Robin Grunmeyer with the invocation.
In, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us this evening. If you would, please bow your heads and join me in a word of prayer. Dear Lord, we thank you that we can gather here tonight and to continue to take care of the business of the city and the stuff that needs to be done for the residents of our community. We pray, Lord, for our residents and our community at this time. People are wearing thin, people are getting frazzled. I just pray, Lord, that there would be a sense of peace and comfort for our residents during this difficult time. I think the light is at the end of the tunnel, Lord, and we've seen little glimmers of hope throughout our community, Lord, and for that I'm so thankful. I'm thankful, Lord, for our residents and their tenacity and their resilience, Lord. And I just pray that as we go through these next few weeks and months, that you would continue to bestow those qualities upon our residents, Lord. I pray that as we go through this meeting, you would allow us to think clearly and seek what is best and right for our residents. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
Now we'll have a presentation from Captain John Pingel of the Riverside Sheriff's Department. You want to come forward there, sir, and give us an update? Thank you.
There we go. Thank you, sir. Members of the council and city staff, it's good to be here with you this evening. My name is John Pingel. I'm a captain with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. I'm a temporary captain. And what that means is that I retired a captain from the sheriff's department in December of 2017 after serving as a captain for about nine years and got to work with Councilman Hoffman over there before he left. That was a good experience. And I was retired for about a year, a little bit more than a year, and I got a phone call asking me to come back to the sheriff's department and work on special projects. And I've been doing that since March of last year. I work in what's called the Research and Development Unit. It was newly formed in March of 2019 last year. And our mandate when we came back to work, and there's another temporary captain works with me and a temporary lieutenant as well, and several lieutenants that are full-time. There are six of us on the team, and our mandate is to work on administrative projects for the sheriff. I report directly to the undersheriff and the assistant sheriffs and to the sheriff, too. And my project that I was given was to find efficiencies or cost savings for the contract cities and to improve relationships with the contracts as well. So we've been all about doing that since we came back. And in fact, I met with your city manager last August. We talked about some of this business. At that time, I told him we were on a voyage, we were on our journey to find cost savings, and explained that we hoped that we would have them by the fall last year, and we did. And so after we landed on what we felt were strong cost savings that would work for all contract cities and even work for unincorporated areas of the county patrol, we went back and reported to the sheriff, we presented to the sheriff. After that, we received his strong approval. We then went to the county and presented to the EO's office, Jeff Van Wagenen, and received his strong approval. And they strongly supported what we're doing. And so since that time, we've been moving forward with these efficiencies or these cost savings that we've identified. It's a better way to do business in terms of how we police. It's a smarter way to police. And it's data-driven. We'll talk a little bit about that. You're familiar with your overall budget currently. You're running 60 hours of contract time currently. You have a number of dedicated positions that are up there on the screen. I think all of that's not news to you. What I do want to talk about, though, is how we staff. And traditionally in law enforcement, over the decades, we've relied on what we call a population-based model. The conversation would typically go, when I was a sergeant, when I was lieutenant, the captain would walk in with the city manager and say, hey, Department of Finance figures have come out. We see that City X has grown by 3,000 over the past year, and that drives roughly three more officers for the police department. And it's not cost-effective, and it doesn't address the workload in a given city. If you compare cities like Temecula, let's just pretend that Temecula has 100,000 population and Moreno Valley has 100,000 population, then that would drive 100 officers for both. But the workload is vastly different, and the population-based model does not account for those differences. And in fact, Moreno Valley needs far more officers than does Temecula because of the types of radio calls and the amount of workload that's generated from those radio call types. And so we were aware of a 2013 ICMA study, International City-City Management Association. It's a research group, and they did a 2013 study that talks about a workload-based staffing model, a staffing model that's driven by what a city actually generates in terms of workload. And it's data-driven. It can't be... It's strongly supported by the actual figures that are driven by a city, especially for patrol. So in terms of workload for a given city, when we talk about patrol, what's that workload or what generates that workload? Well, it's your calls for service. And those numbers are irrefutable. Those numbers come through the CAD system at dispatch, and they change from year to year. They can be referred to by a police chief. They can be referred to and scrutinized by the city council. And so there's no fudging there in terms of what your workload is for a city. And so the workload-based model is strong. It's irrefutable in terms of what's actually happening in your city and what drives the number of deputies or officers you need on the streets. And these are the calls that came out for the contract cities in Riverside County fiscal year 18 and 19. You'll see Norco right there in the middle. And the number that I'm going to focus on today is that 11,464. Your total calls are 19,486, but 11,464 were calls that were generated by the public, calls for service from the police. That 19,000 number is total calls where a deputy may have issued a request for a citation, a file number, made an observation on someone, maybe a suspicious person, calls that were not generated. They were self-generated by the deputies but not called in by the public. So your workload that's driven by the community is that 11,464 number. And if you look in that white-colored column there, it says number of calls handled by CSOs. And in Norco, it's 6.52%. However, we scrutinized every single radio call for the city of Norco and for every city in Riverside County for that fiscal year of 18 and 19. And we put them in a category of what can deputies handle and what can our CSO safely handle, given their job duties and practices within the department. And so that number, that column at the end, for Norco, 21%, is the total number of calls that the CSOs here in Norco could handle based on this information from your city. To drive the point further home, if you look all the way down at Temecula, you'll see that they have a whopping 53% of their calls that could be handled by CSOs because of the nature of the calls, past vandalism reports, past thefts, burglaries where there's no suspect information, those kinds of calls. There are a lot of those kinds of calls in Temecula. But when you go to Moreno Valley, not to pick on them, but you'll see a whole different kind of story. Only 17% of their radio calls for service can safely be handled by CSOs. So Norco is kind of there in the middle at 21%. And out of this 2013 ICMA study, which researched 62 law enforcement agencies across the country, it was a very intensive study that was done. The biggest takeaway from that study was that essentially for all the departments across the nation, it's important to have what they call a 60% rule, which is what we call a saturation point. And what that means, and we're going to refer to it as we go a little bit farther down in this presentation. And I'm not going to get bogged down in formulas or math. We could do that. But this stuff gets very complicated very quickly. However, it's important to note that a 60% rule for patrol is the total amount of time in a percentage way of how much a deputy should spend handling their calls for service during their shift. So let's just pretend that they have 10-hour shifts. I know they're 12-hour shifts, but to make the math easy, a deputy should spend no more than six hours of his total 10-hour shift actually handling radio calls for service. Proactive time is additional time that deputies should have, and that proactive time is part of that 60% rule. And then administrative time is 40% for writing reports, for performing those duties at the station, booking their evidence, doing the other reports that are required for them through their typical job duties. So just remember that 60% rule. And remember, it's in yellow because we're going to start looking at some charts in a minute. I don't want to bog you down in this either, other than to say there is a specific minimum staffing formula that we came up with that tells us, based on the number of calls for service and how long it takes to handle each call average throughout the whole year, and we computed that for every contract city. It is different for every contract city. But for Norco, I believe the time was 48 minutes. It almost lines up exactly with the ICMA study of 2013, which said 48 minutes across the nation. And then there's the formula, the 60 minutes divided by 365 days, divide by .6 to show the productive hours, blah, blah, blah. But that's the formula that helps us identify exactly how many deputies you need per shift based on the actual workload that you're generating from the public here in Norco. So that first number there in yellow, the 63 for Harupa Valley, they're above the saturation point. That's not good. You don't want to be anywhere near 60, and you certainly don't want to be above 60. Because if you're at 60 or above, what that means is that second number there, I don't know what that color is, lavender, purple, they're all zeros. And what that means is there's no proactive time. The deputies are spending their entire six hours handling radio calls. And if that's the case, there's no time to go out there and conduct a traffic stop or a pedestrian stop. You see someone suspicious that think they're committing crime, but there's no time to handle that and drive down your crime rate before there's another call for service. What happens in these cities is that they go call to call to call all shift, and they're not being proactive. The crime rate goes up because all the deputies are doing is handling reports. No one's going to jail. And by the way, those numbers were borne out when we looked at their arrest stats. We looked at their productive citations and arrests. They're almost zero for these cities for the patrol deputies. So you don't want to be anywhere near that 60 number or above. Contracts that are below the saturation point or below that 60 number, you can see all the numbers there. You see La Quinta at 30. They're spending half their shift handling calls. The other half of their shift, they are handling or they're doing proactive time. They're out there looking around, looking at suspicious characters, looking to investigate the radio calls for service in a more profound and deep way. And that drives their crime rates down. If they're driving their crime rates down, that in turn reduces also the total number of calls for service that come in. We'll see Norco at 39. That's number two in the county. That's fabulous. So we applaud you for your strong police staffing here in the city of Norco. So currently, for your total calls for service, and these are the calls again for service that come from the public, what's actually happening in your city is that 93% of those calls are being handled by sworn officers or sworn deputies. CSOs are only handling 7% when they could handle 21%. Currently, your productive hours drive five deputies per day. You have a .3 CSO through a ratio for a total of 5.3 positions per day. And those are your ratios underneath that. Again, you have 39%, 21% proactive time, 40% is your administrative time. So let me show you something a little more exciting. Was talking with your lieutenant, Lieutenant Elliott, talking about staffing, talking about the city's needs, what the city wanted to achieve. By the way, we're getting phone calls now, a lot of phone calls from a lot of different cities. A lot of this information has been presented to a number of the cities as well. And a lot of them are calling now interested in finding savings during these trying times with the virus impacts on municipal government. And so what we're able to show here is that if we were to change the way we deploy the deputies, you could reap $491,200 annual savings. And I'm not talking about reducing your staffing on the street. What we're showing here is that currently you have roughly 5.3 positions per day. But if we just change your hours a little bit from contract hours and we make one of those positions a dedicated position, that changes completely the ratio and the savings for you. And at six positions per day, you reduce the amount of patrol time handling those radio calls. The percentage is down to 36 instead of 39. But you increase the amount of proactive time from 21 to 24. You have more proactive time. You have more positions out there on the street per day. That means more bodies are available to handle radio calls. We believe this will drive down response times to radio calls because you have actually more people on the shift assigned to patrol. And you still reap a savings of $491,000. So Lieutenant Elliott and I were talking about this. He's the one that, in talking with him, he recommended we consider this idea. We talked back and forth. I thought it was a perfect scenario for your city, to be frank. Because you could have cut more. You could have raised that ratio of time spent handling calls farther up to, say, 50 or 55 and approach that limit of 60. But that's not really prudent. That's not really where a city wants to be. So you cut that down a little bit. You increase your proactive time, but you still reap a healthy savings every year by having more Finally, too, there's all kinds of different scenarios and different staffing levels we could talk about. What I would like to emphasize for you is that little increases, little changes in staffing can reap big changes in the amount of money that you pay. If you just added one more dedicated deputy, instead of having one dedicated deputy in patrol, you added one more to have two, this is now your cost. You're spending more money annually because of that small change. So I think the proposal and the recommendations that Lieutenant Elliott shared with me today are right down the center of what's prudent and what's helpful for the city. And at the same time, we're here to help and advise Lieutenant Elliott and the Norco police as to what they feel is most helpful and prudent for the city of Norco. All of this is from Sheriff's Administration, a voluntary approach. So we're not going to come in and tell your folks who are the experts here in Norco how to police the city. We're simply saying, hey, here's some options for the city of Norco. Consider these. If they don't work for you, that's fine. Do whatever you like. We're here to support you. But we just want you to know that these are some cost savings measures that are available to you. And that has been the principle that guides the work that we're now doing. There are other cost savings measures that we're working on that we haven't even talked about tonight, other variables that are exciting and forthcoming that are fantastic. I think Sheriff Bianco was right on the money when he said, hey, take a look at how we operate, find better ways and cleaner ways in terms of being more efficient so that we can save our folks money, work smarter, and work better, be more productive, and also save some money. And we're excited about some of the things that we've come up with thus far. And that's all I have for this evening. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions? Greg?
I like the numbers that you're showing for the savings, but where's the give? Maybe, and I'm not picking up on it. Are we losing a CSO? Are we...
No, there's...
Is our current count status quo? Is it just a rearrangement of priorities?
It's a rearrangement of your contract deputies only. So let me make a couple of things clear here. Currently, you're running five deputies a day for your contract hours. Your contract hours are 60 hours per day. Five times 12, because that's the number of hours on a shift, you have five deputies. If you cut that down to four contract deputies per day, you're running 48 hours instead of 60 hours. But then you throw in one more dedicated deputy, not per day, but per the week. So you're running a little bit less than sworn. But let me remind you that you also have a number of dedicated deputies that you're already paying for that are already out in the field. You're running... Have your numbers here. You have two deputy sheriffs for community-oriented police and then two deputies for traffic as well. Those remain unaffected by any of this. They're still there. And so the big difference between a dedicated body and a contract body is that if a dedicated deputy calls in sick, there's no backfill. That's why a dedicated deputy position is cheaper. So Lieutenant Elliott and I spoke about this. We felt that it was completely manageable to have one of those dedicated deputies assigned to patrol. And if he calls in sick, you still have a reserve of dedicated deputies over here that you can pull from and backfill his position. Yet you reap the savings. I think in the long run, what he felt and what I feel, too, is that it's completely manageable by a sergeant and a lieutenant. You reap those savings. It just requires a little bit more attention, that's all, by a sergeant to say, oh, Deputy so-and-so who called in sick and is our dedicated deputy is not here. I need to pull Deputy X and put him in patrol today. And Deputy X will be there because you have four dedicated positions there that you're already paying for.
And how do you account for the cost of the backfilling in this scenario?
The cost of the backfilling is for the contract deputies. And so a dedicated deputy rate is far cheaper than a contract deputy. That's where you get your cost savings from.
So in that savings, you're allowing for backfilling, a certain amount of backfilling?
We're not allowing for any backfilling except that you have personnel over here that are, that you're currently paying for. So that if your dedicated deputy, patrol deputy, doesn't come to work, you have a pool or cadre of other personnel that you can draw from to fill that position if you need to. It's just a, in my mind, it's just a comfortable and completely reasonable level of service and simply requires a sergeant to say, okay, I don't have this patrol deputy here, but I have this team over here. I need to make that change. That's currently not required at the moment. That one simple change saves you that much money a year.
I certainly like the direction of being more proactive and more community outreach. So appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ted, anybody got a question?
Yeah, Captain Pingel. And looking at this, and this is, it's difficult for me because I remember my contract rates included all my support staff, everything with it, dispatch, all the teams, those back, those, the forensics, everything else that came along with it. I think that's a hard thing to grasp is that the contract rate in your costs, and now you're throwing a dedicated deputy in there. But that dedicated deputy still comes with all those amenities or not? Can you tell me it's cheaper?
Yes, fully supported. Fully supported. And the reason it's cheaper is because you don't backfill it. That's why those contract positions cost so much because there's automatic backfill at whatever inconvenience that... at whatever inconvenience that may be to the county. That's why it costs so much.
Yeah, you just borrow from the county to go to the contract cities on the big station.
That's right. So that one patrol deputy that's dedicated in this model, if he doesn't come to work, you still have an ability and a pool of personnel to pull from to offset that. Not like they're going to call in sick all the time, we hope.
Well, no, it's a different way of doing business, totally different.
Different way, it takes into account that efficiency or that cost savings that we haven't looked at before. It is a different way of doing the business, but we're not trying to be too aggressive with this. We just want to basically keep it the way it is and yet give you some savings. We kind of feel like that's what we've done here.
And so the CSO positions, those are all CSO 2s that are out there versus CSO 1s?
Yeah, and there's not even any CSO 1s anymore, sir. They're all graduated up to CS 2, CSO 2 automatically if they pass their training phase.
Okay.
So, and you have three of those that are in patrol. So we haven't added any CSOs, still have three, just have that one dedicated deputy per week. That's the only difference here. Seems like a small change, but then you see the money there. Now, I will say there's an asterisk, asterisks there. We did the numbers ourselves, we came up with 491,200 something. I said, I don't know, let's make sure about it. I sent it over to our accounting and finance people, and they ran all the numbers, and they also came up with 491. So I put an asterisk there just to say that might change, a couple dollars here or there, but we feel pretty solid about that number in terms of your savings. Double-checked it.
Andy, did you have something?
That's correct, yeah. Which drives four, four contract deputies per day, four times 12 is 48 hours. Yeah. But then on top of that, if you did the dedicated, you'd have one more body. Yes, sir.
Lieutenant, if you need to jump in. So we have two dedicated traffic officers presently. If one of those traffic officer calls in sick on his workday, do we backfill that? We don't backfill that dedicated position? Is this the same scenario that, or different?
Yes, it's what that dedicated word means. Means you've got that body, but if he's gone, then-
You're gone.
Yeah, that's right. It's almost like that person's completely dedicated to the city of Norco, completely, not backfilled, you own that body. If you had your own police department, all your employees would be dedicated, yeah.
We learned that with our fire department.
I do have one other question on this, and that comes back to your support services. So your dedicated positions don't change your sergeant allocations then?
Nope. Those are driven by the ratio.
Driven by the ratio?
Yeah.
Same, so it's the same, it didn't change?
That's right.
Okay.
So we still have those sergeants as well, yeah. By the way, we're just, not to prolong this, but we're taking a hard look at investigators and sergeants and finding those efficiencies as well. That's forthcoming for all the cities and the county. Any more questions?
Any more? Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Yes, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Very informative. Okay, next is the City Council consent items. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from the consent calendar will be separately considered under item number three on the agenda. Does anybody need to pull any items? One C?
One F.
Hang on.
Move to approve the rest.
Wait a minute, I was going to see if there's a card out there, any speaker cards?
There are no speaker cards.
Okay. All right, go ahead and make your motion.
Move to approve the rest.
Have a motion in a second. Call, roll, vote, please.
Councilmember Grunmeier?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, we'll come to item number two and discuss the items that we'll pull from the consent calendar. Kevin, you had one C. Is that correct?
Yeah. So I just had an observation. I noticed that under the Palomino Business Park Development Agreement, actually Conditional Use Permit, when I first met with them, we talked about the buildings being the height of 35 feet, and I'm not going to discuss it, but I'm concerned that they've now gone to 50 feet. I had two meetings with them, we talked about 35 feet, so I don't know if they remember that or not, but I met with Councilman Newton and them, and we said comparable to Parkridge, so maybe, I don't know, pass that on, or I'm just, I'm concerned. I'm going to walk the property with Jeff Resino, but 50 feet is, when you stop and think about it, targets only 28 feet, something like that. 50 feet is huge, so I have a concern. And I know they're situated, but I'm concerned, that's all.
Yeah, no, I know it will, and I just, I just want to make sure they kind of understand
that I have some trouble with that. Thank you, that's all.
Greg? Just one point on that, knowing that it's going to come back, that, because that was under Conditional Use Permit, is that also not a variance because the gateway specific plan has a height of 35 feet?
No, we had that discussion in the planning commission. No, the gateway specific plan actually says that 35 is fine, anything above that requires a Conditional Use Permit.
Oh, not a variance?
No, not a variance.
So that's why it's under Conditional Use Permit?
Mr. Mayor, one-
Start up right now if you'd like.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, one other comment I want to, on this item. I want to thank Andy, Dana, and the staff. Before that meeting, I got sat out in the parking lot like a bird on the hay in the back, and it was very well done, and I appreciate what you did, getting the public attention or allowing them to input, then filter them in. I also went home and watched it on TV. And so it was, I mean, on the computer, but it was very well done. I want to thank you for taking the time and accommodating in this COVID-19 pandemic thing that we have to go through to allow for the public input into it. Thank you, Brian. But I just want to, I just want to point out, thank you very much. And the IT Matt hiding back there.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Motion in a second, roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Grunmeier?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
Okay, item F, Ted, that's yours.
Yeah, the reason I pulled this, and I was surprised, I thought Councilman Bash was going to approve this, we got from, both of us used to sit on that commission going from 11 to 9, and I don't have a problem with the reduction. And I was trying to read this, Dana, and you probably helped me correct this. We made sure that this would be balanced with business members, general public, and that. Yeah, are we still going to have that balance? I'm reading it, and I'm just, I should have asked you a question earlier before. It's still going to have that combination?
Yes, the same, yeah, the same numbers, the same balance, and doing the outreach the same way that we deal with going to businesses and getting referrals from, if you have a business here or you've been involved in business or economic development, you know, in our jurisdiction also. So everything is going to stay the same. I've been working with Roger on this because this did come up in the EDAC. They did vote on it, they did decide, and we will stay the same. And through attrition, we're down to nine. Well, we have a few openings now, so we will be looking at the same process as we have per our bylaws and keep the seats the same.
Okay, thank you. With that, unless someone else, or you have a card, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have no speaker for this item.
Have a motion in a second, roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Grunmeier?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. Item three is public comments. This is a time when persons viewing wishing to address the City Council regarding matters not on the agenda may be heard. Please email the city clerk so that you may be recognized. Your comments will be read at this time into the record. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the City Council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters. At the time such comments are made, the City Council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment. Do we have any cards, letters, or?
Yes, we have one email, I'll read that.
Me?
From Bill Naylor. I would like to request council to include funds in the P&amp;R budget for two projects. First, fund survey of community center park to determine if neighbor has encroached into the park on the south side. The director has said this is necessary prior to referring to code enforcement. Second, fund survey of entrance to Ingle Parks to determine if there is enough room to widen the entrance to allow two-way traffic and a horse trail off Sixth Street. Bill Naylor. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Item four is the City Council discussion items. Staff report presentation. Number two is council questions of staff. Number three is public speakers, favor, against, neutral. Please email the city clerk. Council discussion and action. And that, number A is Army Corps of Engineers Bluff Stabilization Project update. Deputy City Manager, Mr. Petrie.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, there will be a presentation by the United States Army Corps of Engineers. The Corps has completed its environmental review, its SEA EIR, and now we're going through the public input process which is required of that EIR. We are now in the comment period, so tonight, the Corps will be presenting the project to you to receive comment as well as retain any public comments via texting or emailing the city clerk. Those will be read out loud, the Corps will respond to those. They will also make that part of their record of the EIR as they go through this process. This particular EIR or this part of the process, if many of you are familiar with it, we've been discussing the bluff tow stabilization, what I want to call the Shadow Canyon Alhambur Reach for probably about 20 years. There is now funding being put in place, the Corps is prepared to move forward with its partners. One of its partners is the Orange County Public Works Department, and because of their flood air division, it falls into their category. And there's also agreements that they've made for maintenance of this tow stabilization. So, and that'll, you can ask those questions from the Corps a little bit later on, they'll fill you in on that. This is really part of the original 2001 EIR that was done to address several components of that Santa Ana River Mainstem Project with the downstream of the Prado Basin to include the tow protection at the lower Norco Bluffs. And this environmental impact study has assessed those needs. This is part of the process before they moved to construction. They have a very lofty construction timeframe where they would like to be in construction towards the fall of this year and towards the, so moving through the EIR process, getting then going out to bid, receiving those bids, awarding contracts, and moving forward. So tonight, the Corps is here to discuss this with the council. There are some conditions that are going to be required. We've been working with both planning, public works, engineering, or even the park site of this operation. We've had different discussions with the Corps related to specific conditions, particularly, most of those are related to the Hall Road, I'll let them address that. Both Chad and I are here to answer any questions you may have from staff standpoint. And from that, I'll conclude my comments. I'd like to introduce though Gina May from the Corps, Eileen Takata from the Corps, and Derek Walker who, from the Corps, who will be doing the presentation and be prepared to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me. Hopefully you can hear me through the muffled mask, but I want to thank you guys for allowing us the opportunity to come and present this project to you. You did a great job sort of introducing everything, so I think you've probably worked through a couple of my slides that I had at the beginning, so that's great. But again, my name's Jenna May, I'm a biologist with the Corps of Engineers, and I'm also the environmental lead for the lower Norco Bluffs Tow Protection Project. I'm here with some other project delivery team members, including Derek Walker, the project manager, and Eileen Takata, who will be the public involvement specialist on the project. So again, thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk with you. At the point. Oh, there you go. Okay. All right, so as Brian said, we recently released a draft environmental document for public review. The purpose of this document is basically to sort of capture and analyze and disclose the potential effects of our project. And so this project was originally approved and analyzed in a 2001 document, and so this document basically supplements that sort of parent document and then analyzes the design modifications made since that time. And so these design modifications were deemed necessary to basically avoid environmental and cost and timing consequences associated with basically temporarily diverting the Santa Ana River channel. And so before we get into the actual Norco Bluffs project, I did want to provide an overview to provide some context. And so the Norco Bluffs project is basically part of this mega project, the Santa Ana River Mainstem Project, or SARP. This project basically aims to provide flood risk management to millions of people within San Bernardino, Orange, and Riverside County. It is comprised of a number of smaller projects that sort of follow the Santa Ana River from the San Bernardino Mountains out to the coast of Orange County. And so we, along with our project partners or sponsors, including Orange County, Riverside Flood Control, and San Bernardino County, work together to implement this flood risk management project. And so we're going to focus in on Prado Basin specifically because that's the location of the Norco Bluffs project. And so sort of what you're looking at here are all the smaller SARP features I was talking about, including some interior dikes that have already been constructed in the lighter pink, and then the darker red are some of the other project features that are either in design, including lower Norco Bluffs. And sort of what you're seeing here is, as part of the SARP, there was an approval to raise Prado Dam and the spillway. And subsequently, this would require additional real estate acquisition within the 556-foot and 566-foot elevation lines. And basically, these lines represent areas that are susceptible to inundation under a 190-year flood event. And so the lower Norco Bluffs project, you can see, kind of falls within that green area that represents that 556, 566 elevation line. And so that green area is basically the additional real estate acquisition that is required- acquisition that is required as a result of the spillway and Prado Dam raise. And so, this is sort of related to the purpose of the project. And basically, what we're seeing in the Norco Bluffs area is this 566 elevation line continuing to migrate as a result of stormwater runoff and impinging flows from the Santa Ana River. So, we see these really large storm events sort of coming through and causing bluff erosion to Norco Bluffs. And so, in order to basically stabilize or help to prevent the movement of that 566 elevation line, we are proposing to basically provide a tow protection feature that would help to keep that line that, basically, in the floodplain. And so, the continual migration of this 566 elevation line would require additional real estate acquisition, including a number of houses and residential properties. And so, we want to avoid that. And so, again, the main purpose of this project is to stabilize that line, keep it in the floodplain of the Santa Ana River. And we basically do that by reducing the erosion happening at the bluff tow. And so, this schematic is basically just showing you the physical processes that we're seeing in this area. So, we have the active river channel, Norco Bluffs, I guess, and then the residential areas at the top. The active river, of course, in the low-flow conditions, kind of staying in that low-flow channel. But when we see these large storm events, it sort of comes out, spreads along the floodplain, and scours out the tow of the slope. And so, then we start to see the material above that scour sort of fall down, and then you see the basically erosion of the bluff. And so, again, by protecting that tow, we help to prevent that 566 elevation line from migrating closer to those properties and avoid having to acquire those properties. And so, the project we're proposing today is what we're going to be doing to basically protect that tow. And Derek Walker is going to give a little bit more detail on exactly what that structure is going to look like and how it's going to be built.
Thank you, Jenna. Again, my name is Derek Walker. I'm the project manager for this project for the Army Corps. And so, my part of the presentation will be to talk about some specifics to the actual tow protection that will be included as part of the project. Yeah. Okay, so here's a closer and overview map. What we're currently designing is about 7,000 feet of a riprap embankment at the tow of the Norco Bluffs. And from the area there, it's essentially along Shadow Canyon Circle, and we'll go all the way up, 7,000 feet upstream to near that Eucalyptus Avenue up there. So, what we're seeing in this picture, the green area is temporary impacts. That area, that would be impacted during construction of the project. The areas in blue and orange, the yellow-orange will be permanent impact. So, that's the actual structure itself that will be in place after construction. Like I said, it will be a riprap structure with a launchable tow, and I have an exhibit coming up that will show exactly what that means. There will be a permanent access road going in for maintenance purposes to maintain the project off of Shadow Canyon Circle. And included as part of that access road will be an equestrian trail to get down to the river because we will be affecting the existing equestrian access points. And Jenna does have a slide a little bit later to get into specifics for that. This is a cross-section of the tow protection down there. So, essentially, what it is, is we're going to be adding fill material down at the tow of the bluffs and then protecting that fill material with riprap stone. So, it'll be fairly large, 36-inch to 24-inch sized stone riprap that'll be placed in front of the fill, along with a launchable tow section. So, there'll be extra stone placed along the tow of that riprap. And the intent of that is, as the river will scour, if the river scours below this, that stone will drop into that hole and continue to provide the flood protection. And then, as part of the maintenance of the project that Orange County will do, if that happens, if the river does scour, they'll have to go back in and fill those holes with new rock and new fill material. So, on top of the riprap will be an asphalt maintenance road. There will be some fencing, some cable fencing that goes in there as well. And then, concrete v-ditches and other drainage structures to take care of any drainage coming down off the bluffs. And then, we will be restoring areas that are impacted with riparian habitat-type vegetation in the river and upland-type vegetation anywhere outside of the channel area. So, getting into a little bit more details and a little bit of some detail on what we're going to be asking from the city of Norco as far as some temporary easements to construct the project. This is Corydon staging area. And this is where we are proposing to have the contractor staging to build this project. So, as you can see, it's taken up a little bit more than half of that existing area there. And so, this is the area that we are going to be requesting from the city of Norco to have our contractor's trailer for them to store their equipment, to have their office there. And this will be where they actually access the channel. So, the contractor will pioneer ramp. So, essentially, meaning they're just going to add fill material to build a ramp that'll allow them to access the channel to build the, to build the project. So, the staging area will be gated and secured throughout the construction period by the contractor. This next slide is, this is Shadow Canyon Circle, the corner there. This is, I believe, where there is a lot of existing equestrian access down to the channel. And so, we are proposing a permanent maintenance road, an asphalt maintenance road, to go down through that area. And then, adjacent to it, in the yellow color, would be decomposed granite trail, equestrian trail down there. At the bottom of that ramp, this blue area here, that would be a dirt fill that would be placed in front of our riprap stone, a ramp to allow equestrian access back down to the, to the channel. What we do propose is to prevent, the purpose is not to allow for any equestrian or pedestrian use of that maintenance road on top of the, on top of our protection, but it would be to just, you know, funnel people down into the channel to essentially replace the access that we're restricting by constructing this project. This is a cross-section of that maintenance road. So, we would be going along the existing, there's that existing hillside there that we'd be cutting into to construct the road. So, you see there's a, where the truck is, it's a 12-foot asphalt maintenance road. And right next to that would be a 10-foot decomposed granite trail system. And then, any area that gets disturbed by grading activities will be restored with vegetation to help prevent erosion. And then, this slide here, this is the haul route that was originally proposed by us. We have heard back. We have received some comments. That came through Brian to us with a potential different haul route to take. But what this means, over by the women's prison in Prado Basin, off Chino Corona Road and Cucamonga Avenue, that's the location of where we're going to get our borrow material, all the material that we're placing in front of the bluffs. So, and then the red line is the proposed haul route to get to the project site, to get to Corydon staging area. And what we have heard back was potentially to take Bluff Street all the way up to Corydon and take that over, I'm sorry, to take River Road all the way up to Corydon to get to the staging area and bypass Bluff Street.
If I can just add, public works engineering has said taking Bluff Street is not going to happen, basically, that the haul route will need to run a river drive to Corydon and then to the staging area. Just Bluff Street is not an adequate street to handle the traffic that would be during that haul for hauling.
There's a yellow box up there, estimate up to 300 trucks, daily trips per day during construction. And that would be not every day of the, we're estimating about two years to complete the construction of this project. But during the active placement of that fill in front of the bluffs, it could be potentially up to 300 trips a day with trucks going through there. So, we wanted to include this slide because this is what is included in the draft environmental assessment. So, this is what's out there for the public to see. But we have already heard back, and we will evaluate any additional conditions that Norco has for this project. Okay, so that, I'm going to stop here because I'm going to turn this back over to Jenna. But if there's any, you know, I'm going to turn it over to Jenna, and then we'll field questions at the end. I think we'll be most efficient of our time. Jenna?
All right. So, I just wanted to provide sort of an overview of our NEPA, or National Environmental Policy Act, process and kind of show you where we are in that process. It's very basic, NEPA 101. It's basically a federal law that requires us to consider environmental impacts as a result of our proposed projects. We have to consider these for any projects we think will have a significant effect on the human environment. It also requires us to consider any environmental consequences as a result of any of the decisions made about the implementation of the project or the way we go about implementing it. And then, last but not least, it also requires us to solicit and consider basically the public views, which is what we're doing today. And so, just an overview of the different sections or topics that are analyzed in the draft EA. As you can see, there's a number of things we looked into and provided an analysis for. I'm going to focus on one particular one, and that's recreation because I think that's probably a topic of particular interest, given the high equestrian use and interest in use of the trails. So, getting into that, as a result of constructing the project, again, it'll take about two years. There will be some temporary closures of trail access points that basically intersect our temporary construction area. And so, basically, this is for the public safety, obviously, to make sure that they don't encroach into our construction area, and there's equipment going around. It also gives us the ability to quickly or implement the project without having anyone come in. And so, those access points that intersect, basically that orange line, will have to be temporary closed. A very small subset of those temporary closures will have to be permanently closed, and those are the access points that will actually intersect our permanent structure or that tow protection structure that is at the toe of the bluff. And so, these four areas are shown here in the red triangles, and those basically fall along Alhambra Street, Norco Drive, and Quiet Hill Court. And basically, again, the purpose is to keep the public safe and not allow access on top of this structure only to cross over it into the other trails in the floodplain. And then also, they just physically won't be able to enter the area. So, we'll just have to close those four entry points there. After construction, there will still be access, as Derek mentioned, along Shadow Canyon Circle, down that green, which is indicated in the green, and that's along that maintenance road. And we have a commitment to coordinate closely with the city to make sure everyone sort of understands the timing and progress of construction. So, everyone's aware of sort of what's open to them when, and coordinate on signage and, you know, the appropriate ways to communicate sort of what's happening with the project and, again, what access is available for recreational use. The other part of recreation that's going to be potentially affected is, again, related to our staging area for construction. So, I understand this area is also an equestrian staging area as well as an overflow parking lot for the Wayne Macon Park. And so, I understand this gets a lot of traffic, especially on the weekends. So, this overflow parking lot won't be available for approximately two years. And so, there'll have to be some coordination on some either additional or alternative parking that we can work out with the city, ways to provide signage to the public so they know other places to go. And then additionally, that equestrian staging area, we still have the other half of the staging area available for public use as well as that access point for folks to get down and along the trails. And so, kind of where we are in this NEPA process, again, we are to consider and solicit public views on our proposals. And so, we're doing that through, first, this 30-day public review period we have of the draft EA. Our draft was released on April 27th, so we have until May 27th to receive comments. We also have had a meeting before this specifically with a smaller group that lives along Shadow Canyon Circle to sort of get some initial feedback and input on the project in addition to this meeting today. And all the comments or questions that we have received to date and up until May 27th will be compiled, addressed, and incorporated in our final environmental document. And then, this is sort of the timeline. It's a little different than what Brian had mentioned earlier because this is a constantly evolving project. But so, we released our draft last month. We're currently in the comment review period now through May 27th. We are targeting to finalize our EA in September and then release that. And then, construction contract award will be later this year with project construction targeting to start early next year. And so, I think this is my last slide, but again, some opportunities to write comments during this comment review period. You can email me, questions or comments, you can email me directly at my email address here. If you prefer to write a letter or submit a hard copy, you can send them into our district office in downtown Los Angeles, and those will be relayed to myself for compiling and incorporation into our final document. Again, this public period, comment period ends May 27th, the next week. And all the information, basically the EA, the document, and all its appendices are available on our website on our public notices page at that website here. So, I'll leave this up just in case anyone wants to take the information down, but that's kind of all I had. So, again, thank you for allowing us this opportunity to talk to you about our project. And I think we can take questions now.
If I could just add a couple more comments. Gina talked about a focus group. It's very difficult to do, unleash a project like this under the conditions of this pandemic. So, we had to be very creative. So, I coordinated a focus group that was made up of two streets and trails and utility commissioners, two parks and recreation commissioners, residents on Shadow Canyon, and that would, could provide feedback of impacts, their recreational use that is down there, and be able to talk with them. They are allowed to directly communicate with the Corps their concerns. I do know that they're, on Shadow Canyon, they actually have a group, organized group amongst them that this will be presented to their groups for comments and support and comments back to the Corps on this project. So, we did reach out to them to try to get some comments and get a better understanding of the project. A lot of the, part of the staff's comments or concerns are particularly the amount of vehicles or impacts. Now, just to quantify a little bit of the discussion there is, we also thought, well, why don't you bring them in the other way off the freeway or come down? The challenge that's going to be happening from where they, their borrow site is, that at the same time this project- at the same time this project is going on, your bridge project will be starting on Hamner Bridge. So you're going to have a project that's going to be hitting around that same time or a little bit after theirs. So they're coming around the backside is actually a better choice than to try and bring two projects into the same area with that type of congestion. So from a timing standpoint, that isn't perfect, but I do understand the importance of that tow stabilization, because that's been going on for a long time. So those are a lot of the discussions that happened in our focus group, as well as from staff and feedback to the Corps. But I wanted to make sure that you understood that we were looking at some of those bigger picture issues and why couldn't we go this way versus that way? And that was the biggest concern, is what is the impacts going to be on Hamner and the I-15 related to the bridge project? So this is probably the best alternative. Public Works Engineering was very clear, Bluff Street does not work as a haul route that it would have to come up to Corydon. One of the conditions that will come back is the actual approval of the easements and those particular projects, that will come back to you as a separate item, because it takes council approval. And part of that is going to be a list of the conditions. One of the conditions that Engineering and Public Works has outlined is that we'll evaluate that road, and part of the road will require, after the two years, reconstruction. What that level is will be determined by Engineering. So there'll be, and I believe the Corps has a mechanism for that, so we're working through those details right now. One of our big concerns was also, would there be any haul route with, on Shadow Canyon? The Corps has indicated no. All of that will be coming out of Corydon, and the only thing that will be done is when they bring trucks in to do the road improvement and add that trail in to down, right at the corner of Shadow Canyon to lead in it. That's Corps property right now, and they've had that access, or questions have used it. They're actually going to improve that trail and the lead into the river. There was discussion related to that access point, because it crosses over their tow stabilization. So they're going to create, in other words, a bridge across that that our equestrians can then access into the river. That is a condition that they maintain that, and that was one of the, will be one of all, also one of the city's conditions. The other part is Corydon staging area and the impacts. We're going down in part of the season, because we do turf rehabilitation during this time. But when we mount back up, we're going to be looking at how we deal with traffic and all those other things is one of our other issues, because it is overflow during, on Saturday mornings for soccer. And then we did want, it was really clear from our focus group that we still need to maintain access to that trailhead at Corydon, so that you can still have room to trailer in there and still ride those trails. So that was very important for us in relationship. Also, the conditions of the parking lot are part of our conditions, as well as regrading the, the actual staging area in the lower part of the Corydon staging area, the pad there, the decomposed granite pad. So we'll want that left and return back to normal. So those are all part of the staff discussions and conditions. Chad may have some more that he might want to elaborate on, but that's right now where we are, and we're working through their, the Corps' real estate division on that. This has to come back as a plot map to you as well, because of those easements that'll have to be granted in the future. So the, those other areas that are being looked at as being closed off are not real traffic, heavy traffic areas, a couple of them. But the problem is, is if you access that and you try to go down the river, you'd be trying to, you can't cross that rip, rap, and tow improvement. So the idea of shutting that off and making sure that we give them an improved trail into that, we felt was a better solution. And our group thought that was, that's reasonable, because they're going to take and put the trail in and maintain that for us. So those were all part of it. I believe Orange County Public Works will be responsible for the maintenance, is my understanding. And I'll conclude my comments and turn it back over.
You know, Brian, then you talk about the Corps group you got over there, the residents and everything. Now, are you letting everybody, every equestrian over there know about this project, or just a few of those people?
We notified the, this focus group, and we've asked them to then reach out to the residents to talk to them and explain to them. And if they needed to, then they can call the Corps and provide them their comments.
Well, I'd make sure and get it out to everybody, make sure they get it.
One of our objectives was just to also make sure you had this information in front of you. But our different groups that we have in there, Karen Roper, Nick Kay, we have Bill Naylor from our commission, JT, Sherry Walker, Mike Williams from Streets and Trails, Susan Umstead Bowen, and then Bob Pope are all on that focus group. So the goal is to reach out and get that information out to their various media, socials. Plus, it's also being advertised through our website as well.
Okay, I was going to say, get them all, or you'll be, we'll be reading about you on the social media. Okay, anybody up here, Ted, we'll start with you. You got any questions, comments?
You don't want to know. I was 16 years old when I first heard about raising Prado Dam. Okay? That was over 50 years ago. And I'm not, it's not humorous, it is, it's taken us that long. And at that point, they're going to raise a dam, and my folks are going to lose their dairy, they're going to buy our dairy property out, and we were in Archibald between Chandler and Schleishman at that time. So when I hear about raising the dam, that's what I hear, that's what I think about. But, so Brian says 20 years. This thing's going on for a long time, and it's like a snail, it's taking forever to get anything done. Bearing that in mind, and I'm looking at your haul road, I don't know how we're going to justify 300 vehicles, trips a day on a residential street, Corydon, that has four-way stops up and down. Besides, and Chad knows, it's going to tear the street up. And that heavy trucks, Chad, I hope we can repair all those water lines. Because when those water lines are put in there initially, they're put in there, they weren't put in there correctly, and I hope we've done fixing them, because they're going to tear them all apart, and we're going to be dealing with that again. I just, that's what we're going to deal with, as all these 300 trucks a day go through this route. One of the things, so like I said, I've been running that, I remember watching River Road Bridge go out twice before they actually fixed it. There was a haul road built across River Road, across the Santa River, when the bridge were done. And that haul road used to run along the whole, that would be the South Bluff area. You could go all the way down at that time where Corydon Station area is. If we ought to take a road, take heavy equipment and trucks, sand and gravel through there, we should look at a little research at the toe of that bluff on the south side instead of running trucks upon, on our asphalt. That's my opinion. And I don't know if you've done that. I'm not the engineer, you guys. But there used to be a road down there, because that was the way we had to get across the river. They actually put the river with big drainage pipes, and that's how we crossed it several times when that bridge was taken out. And I know because milk truck had to go over it. As I'm looking at that, and I made some notes, Andy, you can ask that, we're going to tie up the Corydon station area for two years?
That's what they're proposing.
You know, right next to it, there's a sewer treatment plant that still belongs to the feds? And you guys, part of the federal government, US Department of Engineers, why don't you take that over? Knock that down for us, clean it up, knock it down, and you can have it, we don't care. And then just give it back to us. I mean, the sewer treatment plant's sitting there, right next to it. If you're going to tear or bring all your equipment in, why don't we clean that up? Or at least make it part of the arrangements to clean that up as they do their thing, if we have to mitigate anything? Because that's an ISO for us, and actually, it's, it needs to go away.
Just a couple items before I move any further. Regarding the property next door, I mean, again, the, obviously, our Corps needs to look at that issue, but there, it's a property that has known contamination. So dealing and using that property puts the project and the operators of the project at liability for that project and any remediations that need to be done on it, which would certainly, I would imagine, again, just my general opinion, would extend this project out before it ever got out, to even come to an agreement for them to use that property. So the immediate issue is that there's the known contamination that for years, we have struggled to get the federal government to address, so we can properly abate that property, because it is an ISO, including knocking down those existing buildings. So it is something that they can look into, but I imagine that's going to be one of the key issues that is a negative about using that area. Also, just going back on your prior comment regarding, and overall, just so the council understands, is no agreement has been done regarding this project with the city. We are gathering our comments and have prepared them and given them to Planning Department for, related to the EIR. So giving our general comments about what they've stated in the environmental document, plus we're developing our own conditions and requirements related to if this is going to go forward, what we want. And just so you understand, as far as what we've indicated is that, the reason we've looked at Corydon being the preferred haul route is we just spent quite a bit of money on Bluff. Corydon is already a poorly, poor road in the first place. So our baseline requirement, which again, we have not negotiated or discussed yet, is that the entire roadway has to be replaced, to a complete reconstruct, not a grind and overlay, not a, you know, a small fill, it's complete reconstruct, because the road is terrible now, and those 300 trucks will destroy that road. So there is not going to be any scale or measurement of what they have or haven't done. I wouldn't accept that. It has to be a complete redesign and reconstruct. That means going all the way down to Sub Base, getting us a brand new road. Plus, during that two years, similar to what Caltrans is going to do, is I would condition that any repairs, any complaints along that haul route, they have to maintain. So if there's calls and complaints, potholes, et cetera, they are going to maintain them and deal with those issues along that road. Because that's what Caltrans had for RCTC, so any complaint came around, it was their project on 91. It's a great model. So everything and all maintenance during that timeframe, they have to deal with. And we would address any issues that if we determine that the activity or improper maintenance of the roadway resulted in a main break or an issue, we would have some sort of caveat that, that we look at that and find out if they're culpable and have to pay for that repair that we would ultimately do if we had to. But I wish to emphasize, nothing has been negotiated, we have not agreed to anything. But as far as our base concerns and laying out the table, what we'd have to done if you're going to use our assets, here's the things that I've stipulated that we would want done to make Norco whole, at least when it comes to the roadways. Brian's working on the issues of the staging area and other aspects. We have similar concerns with Shadow Canyon Road and what activities occur there. We have not yet had a chance to meet, to actually just talk about our conditions and our concerns. We're going to do that. Right now, we've been focusing on getting the environmental related comments back, but we've also kind of given them a preview of what we would like to see done on a base agreement that we would potentially bring back to this council. So just, just wanted to make sure we have that information.
Thank you. And Brian, I know you talk to people in Shadow Canyon. 300 trucks a day. I would imagine, and I'm just guessing, there's probably anywhere from 60 to 80 homes, maybe not that many, at least 60 homes along Corydon Avenue on both sides of the road, that you just impacted for two years, if this 300 trucks a day. And it's not them that are going to get the complaints, he's going to get the complaints back there. We're going to get complaints sitting up here. At 300 trucks a day on Corydon Avenue, we already hear it now. It's a speedway. It's a death trap. People don't do anything. I'm sure the sheriff gets plenty of complaints about the traffic now on Corydon. 300 trucks a day. I'm just saying, if you wanted to, if you wanted to include the environmental impact or the, your focus group, yeah, I'll talk to them residents on Corydon that are going to have to survive that truck traffic on there. And then the final thing, and I'll let somebody else say, you talked about fixing that trail down Shadow Canyon. What's the grade going to be on that? Just curious. Because I know the grade coming down from Corydon, staging area down to the river, it's bad. I mean, that's, that's about a, at least a seven or eight percent grade going down that hill.
So I believe we're at about a seven to eight percent grade going down from Shadow Canyon.
That's steep. I mean, you're talking about a horse trail, I mean, you're going to have to maintain it eventually, Brian, or who's going to, someone's going to maintain it?
Oh, no.
As it goes through the years?
Orange County Public Works will maintain it. That's going to be in our conditions.
And they're going to maintain it all those times, every time it rains, every time? So we have erosion problem every?
Well, they're going to have to maintain their service road and all of that. Obviously, this is a major impact, either way we look at it. And it's a tough one there. I wish this was a long, was done a long time ago, but the reality is, is the tow is eroding and those homes along the bluffs, there's an impact there as well.
I agree with that. I'm not saying, this shit, you're right. Like I said, this been going on, I remember taking my mother to these meetings 50-plus years ago, okay? And this was all talked about then, and with snails pace, nothing got done. And all of a sudden, boom, boom, we want to get it done. It just amazes me that how much impact, especially a haul in the roads, 300, 300 trucks a day coming out of there when it should have been alternative routes down on the riverbed that could have been thought of in doing this. Now, it's somebody else. Thank you.
Kevin?
So Brian, what are they going to do about the Navy mural that's right, right below the staging area? I'm just kidding. No, I mean, the problem is they're losing houses over there. And I'm a little bit nervous about 300 trucks also. I mean, we all are. But the truth of the matter is, those houses, I can, you probably also remember, Ted, when there was another 50 feet out there.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we didn't buy a house there, because my dad walked to the end and went, whoa, where's the, where's the bluff? So that really, it'll just keep eroding and eroding, so it's going to have to be done. I like the idea of tearing down the old historic sewage treatment plant, that might work. Be nice to get rid of that thing. But I don't know if that would, given what you're saying, if that's possible. So anyway, we'll wait and see what the comments are. I haven't even seen the EIR, I'd like to see it. Have we received it? Can, can we get, have I gotten it?
Got the?
The EIR?
Yeah, it's in your?
Oh, in the packet? Okay, all right. There's, no, I'm thinking?
It's in the email I sent you. It's all digital, so.
Oh.
I can resend it. If you want a hard copy, I'll have one delivered tomorrow.
Yeah, I want a hard copy. So I didn't see it.
It's, I don't know, 400 and some pages, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I prefer hard copies and that stuff.
Gina can, maybe she can address the questions both you and Councilman Hoffman had related to the treatment plan. It was looked at as an alternate, so maybe you should address that now.
Yeah, sure. So in the original design, that was the staging area. And we went with that for a while, until we found out that it was contaminated, and even though it's a federal property, it's not like Corps property, I guess. So my understanding is that right now, they're going through a Phase 2 remediation of that area. And so, I believe it's the GSA property, they are, we've talked a little bit about it with, our real estate person has talked a little bit about it with their contact, but they didn't give us a lot of detail about exactly what was happening, other than they were going through that Phase 2 remediation, and they would provide, a report would be maybe around July. So given that information, that actually required us to move our staging area and go into this whole negotiation and easement of using that Corydon staging area. So that was the original plan, but because of the contamination issue, it's just not feasible and, at this moment, and?
Yes, I'll just add to that. Part of the conditions of receiving federal funds for this project is that we had to design and construct this thing within five years, a five-year period. And waiting for any HTRW cleanup would blow that schedule out of the water and not make it feasible for us to construct in that timeframe. So that's the other issue that, to go along with that staging area. But we did, we did look at it, and it was owned by the Navy. Now, it's turned over to GSA, and they're actively investigating that HTRW there. So that's just something the Corps couldn't take on. We would essentially have to take over that responsibility from GSA, and that's not something we're prepared to do, that's not something we're budgeted to do. And that's, yeah. Yeah, it would blow our budget. We wouldn't have enough money to, you know, construct this project.
Pushing the river.
And then, so any of the information that we have about that cleanup is in that, is in the EA. So there's like an HTRW section, and in there is all the information that we have on that site and why we couldn't use it.
May Robin?
Just a couple questions for you. On the vehicle traffic? On the vehicle traffic, what realistically is going to happen? Because I can't even fathom, and I'm by a storm drain project right now. I cannot fathom 300 trucks a day. So over the two-year period, realistically, is that 100% the accurate number? Or is it in phases where there's going to be no trucks and then maybe 20-some trips a day? And then how do we ratchet up to 300 trips a day? Can you explain that to me?
So based on the, on the quantity of fill material and the quantity of rock that's going in, that's the maximum trucks per day that we calculated. That won't be, if our entire construction period is two years, it's not two years of running material down in that river. So it will be, you know, it really, it's hard for us to say right now because we don't direct the contractors' means and methods of constructing the project as to the timeframe. But I suspect it will be coming chunks. Like they're going to, they're going to build this thing in pieces. You know, they're going to, you know, start in one section and keep moving up for it. So realistically, I don't think it's going to be 300 trucks a day for, for two years. But there will be heavy periods of, of construction, you know, when they're running dirt and running rocks. It will be, you know, throughout the day, throughout the operating hours that we allow for the construction of the project, they will be running, running trucks through there. Unless we put some sort of restriction on the contractor. That's, that's another, you know, potential thing we could do is restrict them, but then of course.
It extends the time.
It extends the time of the project.
Right. And I'm wondering if that's a consideration on the part of the city for some restrictions, either with the length of the day or some, you know, something to mitigate the potential for the truck trips?
Our default is what the, our city ordinance is called for, meaning it's from seven to four. As far as on the public roadway, that as far as our activity and any of our contractors, so we would limit it to be consistent to seven to four. Doesn't mean we couldn't shrink that timeframe and say it's going to be from nine to three. And that's the only time you can do that. But it just means that could end up having even more trucks during a tinier period. So we don't know, again, it's, we can't do the means and method of the contractor. We're simply just trying to make sure in the end that whatever happens, that we are made whole.
Right. So this 300 trucks was volume calculations, I'm assuming? Okay. So it could be potentially off depending on equipment and that kind of stuff. So then my next question would be, is there going to be a point of contact, somebody that's going to be at the project site all the time from Army Corps that residents and people that are right there by the project can reach out to instead of inundating city staff? Is there a point of contact that someone will have available for residents to go to with my windshield got cracked by your truck when it dropped a rock? Or there's this problem here? The little things that are going to come up? Is that a part of this project or is there a design need for that?
That's something we'll need to work out. So typically on our projects, our non-federal sponsor is responsible for coordinating with the public in this project that is Orange County Flood Control. Now with the project being in the city of Norco and not in Orange County, that's something we're going to have to develop that communication line. And, and, you know, we are fully open to receiving the public's input and comments and complaints. That's something that happens on every, every project. We just need to define that mechanism of how that's going to happen.
Right. I just think it's more of the day-to-day. So again, I'm only going to revert to what I know. I have a storm drain project going through my facility. I have a point of contact with the county, so I don't have to call the city every time. I can call the county guy, the project guy that is there somewhere during the day and I can call him. We take five minutes, we resolve whatever is going on or whatever questions. I'm just wondering if there's some way to build a mechanism? And if that's an Orange County person that is there on site for the duration, I'm fine with that. But I feel like it needs to be somebody that is on site there that really is in it. I don't want somebody sitting in an office that doesn't know what's going on when it would literally take somebody five minutes to probably resolve something if they're there and they know the project and what's going on.
Understood.
So.
As far as putting a body, that would be something between the Corps and, and the contractor. We certainly would condition them to have signage out in the project area, certainly at the, at their, their, their base area at Coridon. We'd have signage along that whole Coridon area where they put up the large sign saying if there's issues, call who they're supposed to contact. So it clearly demonstrates it's, if it's Orange County Water District, their project manager, and then every resident along that route, plus we can designate the roads adjacent to that, to a certain distance, all get proper notification of the contact information for the project. Something that also gives a blur about the explanation in case they weren't aware of what was coming. You know, an informational flyer that hopefully they keep on hand, but there will be permanent project boards along that whole route. So they understand on one end or the other, if you have an issue, something occurs, here's the information.
Right. I just think it's going to be better all the way around, the more informed people can be and the easier it is to get somebody because there's nothing more frustrating than having an issue and then not being able to get in contact with somebody that can help you resolve that issue. So I think that's all I have.
When they did my street, the contractor come up to my house and gave me his card to call if they had any issues out there. And he did everybody on the, on the block that way, so we didn't have to bother Chad and them. Greg, you got anything?
You know, Ted, you're a few weeks older than I am. And just so the, you know, how long this project's been going, that I built two buildings for the Corps of Engineers at Seven Oaks Dam in anticipation of this project further down the road. And that, that dam's got to be 20 years old, 25 years old now? So the wheels turn slowly. One of my concerns is Coridon staging area that, I don't know if I addressed it through you or to Brian. The trees that we planted years ago, the picnic tables, all the irrigation, trees will still be maintained even though they're going to be fenced off, Brian. The irrigation lines that we put in aren't that deep. Guess this is a good way to put it. So I mean, I mean, all that underground type of damage? I may have a different opinion on, on truck trips. When, when you say 300 trips, I would equate that to a trip, that same truck is one in, one out. So I would call it 150 trucks a day, which is still a large magnitude compared to.
Correct.
Yeah. One going in and the same truck coming back out is two trips. I think nothing less than complete reconstruction of Coridon. It's a residential street and compared to some of our other streets, it's one of our better ones. Okay? But one of the things that I've learned all along is that the contractor or the Corps, whoever, is, is going to have to pick up the cost to have a sheriff. When, when they're hauling, there needs to be a, a traffic officer or a deputy on Coridon Avenue. Because every one of those trucks, they aren't employees, they're all independent contractors. They get paid by the trip. So they're getting their $85 to $100 every load. They're going to hump as many loads as they can during the day. So there's no regard for speed, there's no regard for stop signs because it's just all based on volume. So I want to make sure that the days they're hauling, that they're picking up the cost for a sheriff to be there. Now, I know this to be true, okay? And I'm sure the lieutenant can comment on, on when you're hauling like that. Look how screwed up it got with caprock just for that couple of days of hauling. We had all of six and Hamner all too blocked. And those guys, they weren't paying any attention to speed or signs or anything. Yeah. Were they going 25 miles an hour, Kevin? At three in the morning?
Three in the morning.
Okay.
Well, Jake, that was the other issue.
Yeah.
Consider that an enforcement officer. So like we did, that's how that.
Get my drift on that though, right? So I think those were my, my, my two biggest concerns.
It'll slow the cars down. They won't be able to go fast. It's not going to have to make up a difference on the tickets on the trucks.
Honestly, you can't imagine the mess that's going to create.
Yes, I do because I was over, lived down on that end when they built the one below me.
Right.
Everything. Is that all you got?
No, but it's enough. Thanks.
Okay. Flip back over here to your slide that shows the access going down Shadow Canyon down into the river bottom, please. Okay, right there. All right, now, you're going to be able to access road to go off of Shadow Canyon down there to the road you're going to put in the river bottom, right?
Correct.
All right, the yellow thing there is a trail.
Correct.
Okay, now, when you get on that road going crossways there, is the trail going to be equal to that road or is it going to be down below that road?
So the trail, you're talking about where it comes in, where it meets this road, right? That'll be level. It'll come in at the same, the same elevation as the top of that, this maintenance road.
Okay, so.
So it'll cross at the same level, yeah.
You get to that, do I see a yellow line going left and right, up on, equal with that road going along there? Is there a trail running along there?
It, it does not. That's just, yeah, that's the color from the CAD drawing. But yeah, the DG trail is only along slope, the hillside right here. And then we'll shoot you out down into the, the river channel.
Okay, so they're going to go across that road you're going to put down there into the river bottom?
Correct.
Okay.
And we would have gates, vehicle gates, like pipe gates on, on either side of that trail.
It's going to be where they can't ride.
Correct.
Because on the one below my house over here, people ride on it all the time because there's nothing in the river for them to ride in except quicksand and trees. And this thing's been there for 20-something years. And I remember the trucks, when they started building it, and I think the city, I don't know if you were here then or not, Brian, if the city rerouted them down Old Hamner, down into the river bottom there by the bridge, and then they went on that road they built over there. But I know they started up on the surface streets there and they got, got shut down. But they did a good job building that road because I used to ride on it all the time.
Bruin, just to add to your comments, some of the focus group comments was, right now we have a problem, and I believe the lieutenant can talk about it because he's met with the Shadow Canyon residents, is that we have people coming down this, this is a, a road anyway technically, and people are cutting through with vehicles and off-road vehicles, trucks, et cetera, and racing down behind those homes on Shadow Canyon.
Right, yeah.
This will actually eliminate that from happening and not allow egress or ingress behind those homes anymore. The other thing that was discussed is, is that, from a suggestion from the group, was to make sure that our public safety have access to this road and can open those, the maintenance road gates and get up and down as well as NART if we ever had to do rescues down in the river. So those were just some suggestions that came from our group.
Well, yeah, on that road going below those homes over there, that'd be a good, good access road for the public safety. Don't, remember that meeting, chief was in on that meeting, you were, when we had that meeting with all those ladies over there about the possibility of fire and that coming out of the river bottom up to their property. So that'd be, that'd be a good idea there.
Based on this, it's going to be mitigating a lot of that material. They'll replant later, but yes.
Right. Now, is that, is that going to go in, in front of Nick's house, get down in there? Because he's got the house right there on the curve.
It runs right next to his house now. So they're really just using that approved area. As you know, there's a block wall there.
Yeah.
That belongs to the Corps. So they're going to improve that area between the two homes, Nick's and the other. That'll be a full road, a service road with a trail.
Okay. Well, that's all the questions I have. Anybody else want any comments or Kevin?
I'm real happy you're doing this. I mean, we'll work out all the problems, but this is something that needed to be done a long time ago. And maybe, maybe the focus needs to be on the fact, the one, it's going to improve the trail, two, it's going to give a good access point. There's going to be some pain if we can control the air brakes and do this stuff like that. It should work out. You know, I do have a weird question. Greg, you know the guy that lives right next to the staging area. He's got that big, open area. I wonder if, I wonder if he could, you could park there and that would alleviate what you have to do over, over on the staging area? Or is it too small? It's just an idea.
I think it's too small and, and I'm making the assumption also with that staging area is not only equipment, but there'll be stockpiling material there.
Correct. So potentially stockpiling.
Right. So you need a fairly flat area, Kevin.
Yeah, it needs to get done. So I'm, I'm glad you guys are finally doing it. About time the federal government got off their butt. No, I'm just kidding.
So there will be, there will be some ancillary improvements there. I mean, there is a lot of erosion, a pretty big erosion area coming off there right now. That'll be filled in, you know, as part of the, the project, part of the contractor getting down there, so.
Well, that's, that's real exciting that you're finally going to get it done. So thank you for your presentation and your time, and I'm sure we'll be seeing more of you before we get all these.
You're welcome. And we appreciate your comments and concerns and the list that, that Brian's putting together. That's what, that's what we want to hear from City of Norco and give us a chance to get with Orange County and our partners and, and evaluate and respond to those and, you know, and negotiate what we can, can or can't include in the project, so.
Well, thank, thank you very much, and it was nice meeting you folks.
Nice meeting you all, too.
If we can help you, just give us a call. Call Kevin. Okay, that was a receive and file information. Next, next item is.
Mayor Hannah, can I add one thing? During reading public comment for Bill Naylor, a comment did come in, it did not refresh. So I do need to read one more comment into the record as public comment. It'll, one comment, that's it.
No problem.
The first one is, or the comment is, "Dear Council, 4th of July is 45, 44 days away. The COVID-19 situation is a constant state of change and updates. Based on recent statistics and in light of many things now being allowed to open, I would certainly hope that we will be able to continue forward with our annual plans for 4th of July, including the morning trail ride and the picnic in the park at Pike's Peak. Being outside is beneficial to our health. Sunshine and UV exposure is harmful to the virus and sunshine provides for vitamin D, which is helpful for overall health. Forty-four is both a long time away, but for planning purposes, it's right around the corner. With so many of our annual traditions already canceled for this year, I would strongly encourage you to please allow us to celebrate our American pride in our normal manner and tradition. I'm sure there are always, there are ways we can hold this event and still follow whatever guideline might still be in place by then. I am still volunteering to play music and host the games at the park, and I'm also willing to write a check for $1,000 to cover costs associated with the event. Brian's team can plan the details, but I ask for your direction to please give them guidance and support for this day and what it means to all of us here in Norco. Respectfully, Jeff Cahen."
Jeff Cahen?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on now with council and staff comments. We'll start with you this time, Robin. We'll go counterclockwise.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to, first off, just say thank you to the residents and community of Norco. My comments last week during our discussion, in my mind, were solely just to give perspective on what our residents, some of our residents were dealing with and some things that we needed to consider. And the outpouring of support from our community has been really overwhelming. So thank you to everybody that has supported our project and the food pantry at the school. It's been absolutely amazing.
It's been absolutely amazing and it's one of the things that I love about this town is when there's a need, people step up and, and we take care of each other. So thank you all so much for the support.
Greg?
Yes, I'd like to remind the community that we have just opened up recruitment for our commissioning committees, and we are accepting applications. You can go online to the city clerk's office or to Norco's website to commission recruitment and download your application and email it in to me or bring it by, sorry, you can't bring it by. You can email it to me or mail it in to our office. We are asking for volunteers. We have many seats available right now, and we look forward to working with you and growing your seat on one of our commissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Chad? Ryan? Lizette? You haven't got any money going to give us, huh? Okay, Alma? Chief? Lieutenant? Matt? John?
Just one for Ted's benefit, one old guy comment. When I was with the district, one of my responsibilities with the district office was overseeing the painting of 1776 to 1976.
They didn't like you.
Andy? Ted, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I do. I'm as impressed by Captain Pingel's presentation. Andy, I, are, just so I know, and you can tell me yes or no, and John will probably tell me I can't discuss it, but are we having, can we do a little committee? Are we doing anything on this with the lieutenant?
What we're going to do, hopefully at the next budget workshop, is put a side-by-side budget together to verify the number, for some foremost. I, I think it probably works out because I'm looking at, if you cut the patrol hours by 12 a day, 365, it's like over $800,000 savings there. So you use that to fund a, a dedicated officer, and there you go. You're going to have close to what he said, I believe, in savings. It's a question of whether that model works for the city of Norco. It looks like they have looked at that, and certainly the lieutenant has, is advocating that. I've had discussions with him going back to when they first presented this. And that's why we brought Captain Pingel here tonight to, to share that so that you guys can have a question asked. But we'd be glad to have you, given your experience in there to-
I changed it over since I was, this is totally new. I mean, I like the concept, it's different.
Yeah, walk with, walk with you and perhaps, and not as the council member, but I, it's one of those things. I don't see anything for us to lose here as far as taking a, implementing it and see how it works.
Yeah. I just want to see, make sure we take advantage of this. This is probably one of the better things I've heard in a long time. So thank you very much.
That all? Kevin?
You know, Chad, we might, if, if this Army Corps thing proceeds, we may need to really look at opening Norconian. We're going to have the bridge, then we're going to have Corydon. And if we open Norconian, that may give people just another way to maybe circumvent traffic. And that, that's the number one street I get complaints about is why, when are we going to open Norconian? When are we going to open Norconian? And I realize it's going to cost money, but it might be a way to alleviate what's, what's coming. I'm very concerned about the bridge construction, the backup, and now if we're going to be running all those trucks on Corydon, I'm just kind of worried. So just something that we, I think we need to think about Corydon, our Norconian, getting that up and going. And then Brian, for you, I had a thought. When the senior center is up and running, we do wellness calls. We, we, there's a huge connection thing going on there. And I mean, when somebody passes away or somebody's sick, everybody notices. And they're like, all of a sudden, you have staff actually calling. Do we have any of that in place right now? Is it closed?
For those that we do know of, we do make contact with them. And we're actually putting together packets now for seniors that they can take home and do activities and stuff with. And so staff is still trying to keep that network and contact base with those seniors who are frequently attending the senior center. But as far as wellness calls, we do do some checks when we know or we've heard, hear that there's, someone might be sick or whatever. We get through our connections, we, we try to do that. Probably not as frequent as it was when the senior center was open.
Yeah, I mean, I-
Because we just don't get that information like we were on an ongoing basis.
Yeah, I ran into a man I hadn't seen in a long time in the new market they just opened on Sixth. And I said, "How you doing?" He goes, "I'm trapped." Says, "I can't get out of my apartment." He says, "I finally decided to risk it." I mean, he had gloves on and he was all swaddled up and he hadn't been out of his apartment for like a month. And so I'm just kind of worried about them because I know that's the tag place for everybody to go to.
Garden is still operating. We do have seniors using it and they're maintaining their social distancing.
That's good.
It was interesting, the other day I had seniors doing their little walk, and then they went and set, distancing themselves under the shade trees, kind of like if that was, because there's no traffic there or anything. So it was more of a grouping, a group showed up, but all distanced and all wearing masks, so.
Okay, well, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we had our mayor's meeting today. I think there was 16 mayors on the line, and Congressman Calvert was our speaker. He, he made a good little presentation and then he got bombarded with questions. And it was funny, only about six or eight people had to ask questions because they were all going to ask the same ones, and he had already answered them. But talking about the $150 billion DC doubling out to the states for this virus and everything, and how the cities were supposed to spend it and that he hoped that they all would. And I told him my main concern on a lot of that, that we make sure we all get our money that we're supposed to get and everything. And one thing I didn't like was that they were closing that veterans home up at Barstow instead of, and, and giving, giving money to the illegals and closing that veterans home. And he said, "Well, that was a state-run operation." But he had already contacted those two state senators and representatives up there to fight that and try to keep that home, home open. But it was pretty interesting that everybody had the same concerns about reopening. And he is for reopening as soon as we can get going, you know, to boost the economy and revenue because everybody's down on their sales tax. And probably a lot of them didn't get a good budget report as we did tonight. I thought our budget was, report was good compared to what some of those other cities are, are going to. But he, I also asked him about the ballot harvesting because he's, he's come out in the paper the other day about, about that, and they're still working on all that. And he told us just to keep writing our congressmen, our representatives, and try to get some results. But I didn't bring my notes. I had some more stuff I wanted to say, but I had to, I'll bring it the next time and everything. But that's, that's all I have. If nobody has anything else, we will adjourn.